Okay, let's get going. This is 4:40. We needed to take a break, so we're going to start the Committee of the Whole for the Murray City Municipal Council for September 21st, 2021. And all council members are present. So let's get started. The first is the approval of the minutes for the Committee of the Whole for August 24th, 2021. And if there are no questions, comments, I would take a motion.
Okay. Boy, can barely get that out, huh? I move that we approve. I want to read the right date. I move that we approve the minutes for August 24th, 2021, for Committee of the Whole.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sounds like they've been approved, so we'll continue on to discussion items. The first one is Discussion of the Fraud Risk Assessment with Brenda Moore. Brenda, welcome.
Okay, now it's on, right? So the state auditor requires us to annually present our analysis of the fraud risk assessment to the council. There's nothing you ever have to vote on. It's not ever done in a, like, a council meeting. We just need to discuss it so that you are aware of our risks and that you are ultimately responsible for the finances of the city. So I think it's a reminder because there were a lot of smaller cities and some entities whose councils and boards did not realize that they should be looking at this kind of stuff. So I went through this. Our total points earned on this was 355, which puts us in the very low-risk category. We answer all of the basic separation of duties as a yes with no mitigating controls. So we have different people balance the bank as who put the money in or who can change people's accounts. Everything is double-checked, all of those types of standard separation of duties. You have a bunch of accountants back there who try and figure out how somebody could steal from us, and then we work on fixing that. We don't trust anybody in accounting. The other things that we have is we have all of the policies that they recommend, travel policies, procurement policies, conflict of interest policies. Some of those are actually ordinances and in the city code, and others are policies. I am a licensed CPA, so we get points for that. And I also have a master's degree in accounting, so we get double points for that. And a lot of my staff has bachelor's degrees in accounting. We, last year, we had everybody, including the council, and we do annually commit in writing that you're going to abide by this city's ethics ordinance. And you have all completed the online training that the state auditor put out there. When we switch to new council members, or once every term, if you get re-elected, you get to watch that training again. I also have, I receive 40 hours or more of formal training every year. And we do have a fraud hotline outlined on our system. It's basically a link to the state auditor's fraud hotline. So we came up with 355, and so very low risk. And that's all I needed to tell you tonight about that. Any questions about that?
I'm just curious on that number of the 355. You can't get any lower than that, you're saying?
You could get higher. We could have a formal internal audit committee, but we don't.
So that's the only thing that was...
We're not big enough. And we could also have, we have an audit committee consisting of two people. The state auditor's idea of a formal audit committee is four to six, and some of them outside the city. I don't feel the need. I think our budget and audit committee does what they need to do. They review the books. We don't need to do anything more formal than that. Our risk is so low, I don't think that...
I was just going to say, with the risk being so low, you wouldn't require that.
Yeah.
And then I thought for sure you were kidding when you said you doubled up. You really do double up.
I really do double up on a lot of them, yes.
Oh, I love that. Yeah, I think that's awesome.
Yes.
That's great for us. Thank you, Brenda.
Are there questions for Brenda? Okay, good job. Thank you. All right, the next is Brenda Kim.
It's me. I'm just standing here.
Good job staying up there. Discussion on Ordinance Amendment Adding Section 3.04.095 Pertaining to Utility Payment Assistance. And Brenda and GL.
I'm going to take this. I think the preamble to this ordinance says it all, that the city is aware of households with the lowest incomes often pay a higher proportion of their household income for home utilities, including electricity, water, and sewer services. The city seeks to help promote the general health and welfare of its citizens by facilitating utility service for those who qualify for government and nonprofit assistance. So the purpose of this ordinance is to authorize my office, the utility billing people, to waive deposits when someone is working with the Road Home, with the heat program, and other agencies that possibly could be helping them with utilities and to get set up into their apartments, et cetera. So there is nowhere else in the ordinance that allows us to waive deposits. Deposits are required by ordinance, so this allows us to do that. We won't waive them all. We don't waive a lot of them. We don't ask if they want them waived, but if they ask us, and they're working with heat, or we will waive an occasional deposit. The other thing that this actually does is it allows the mayor to sign contracts to work with these agencies if they require a contract.
Who signs them now, Brenda?
We have been allowing them there, but they kind of look, they're not interlokal's, but they kind of look like interlokal's. And you guys are the only ones authorized to do an interlocal, so, in an interlocal agreement. So this just allows it, even though it's not an interlocal, but it's got some of the same feel, we just put it in the ordinance that the mayor could sign these without your... There's quite a few agencies out there that do help. Red Cross sometimes wants to help. We got the heat program. The heat program is administering two other programs, one's for water that we're getting ready to sign, and one is for, with other care's money, or ARPA money that's coming in. So we got the rent relief people we're working with. So that's kind of what brought this.
Has there been an issue that the interlocal agreements or the council doesn't sign them?
No, but we try to live by the letter of the law.
I'm just trying to understand why the change and what...
So can I, if I can jump in real quick?
Yeah, please.
What really prompted this was what Brenda said earlier, and that was the issue regarding deposits. There is a program that, through the state, that requires that the city waive a deposit. And because in ordinance, the city council's required deposits, and it's somewhat budget-related, you could say, that's why I've come back to you to say, allow us to, allow the city to waive deposits when there's already a backstop, another governmental agency or some other program that will pay the utility bill. And Brenda's right, when it comes to budgets, you, we come to you for interlokal's like that. There are some limited circumstances where the mayor could sign, but the ordinance that we're proposing under this, it would allow us to waive it in those circumstances where it makes sense, which is when someone's going to step in and pay the bill.
That it wouldn't have to come to us every time?
Correct.
Thank you, GL. Just trying to understand that. Sorry, Brenda. Thank you.
I'm sorry. If it was a one-time circumstance, and it made sense to waive that, the mayor could do that. But where this is just a blanket, in this case, you're going to waive it for everybody in this program, that's, it's more appropriate to come to the council for that.
Got it. That makes sense. Good question. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Okay. I think I got you back on time. Thanks, Brenda. Okay, now, number three. Discussion on the Revised MCCD Design Guidelines. Melinda and Jared. Welcome.
Okay, now is it? You're hearing it now? Okay. So thanks for having us tonight. This is just a quick presentation about the MCCD Design Guidelines, to repeal and replace the existing design guidelines with the proposed design guidelines. I just want to talk a little bit about that, and if you have questions as we go along, please feel free to jump in. And I'll try to be as brief as possible, so we have plenty of time to discuss things after if you have those questions. First of all, this is, this is about the design guidelines that have to do with the MCCD zone. I just wanted to make sure that's clear. It only has to do with our downtown MCCD zone. There were guidelines adopted in the previous code, and that language is still part of our newly, some of the, some of the changes that we've made to the MCCD zoning, Chapter 17.170, has to do with those guidelines, but there are still design guidelines. They have to do with the purpose statement, and we'll come back to this. I wanted to have that in case we want to refer to it, because the design guidelines are supposed to support the purpose statements and the intent of the, of the downtown zone, the MCCD zone. But as I said, we've, we had previous guidelines, and we need to repeal and replace those because we did change some of the, some of the language that has to do with them, and that was part of the, the changes that were made to the MCCD zone in 2019, anticipated that we would rewrite those design guidelines and revamp them a bit, for a couple of reasons, and we'll talk about those as we go. But the previous language did say that we would have them, that they were adopted, and that property located in the MCCD would be developed in conformance with the provisions set forth in the chapter and with the MCCD design guidelines. The current language is slightly different. Guidelines shall be consulted during the review of the proposed development in order to provide guidance, direction, and options which will further the stated purposes of the MCCD. Wherever practicable, the development should adhere to the objectives and principles contained in the design guidelines. And the reason we needed to look at how the guidelines were put together and how we adopted those and how they were, how they functioned, is because of that, that language. There was some confusion created about that conformance with design guidelines and the way that the previous or the existing design guidelines are set up. They're kind of a mishmash of what we would consider guidelines and what we consider development standards. So I wanted to talk about that just really briefly before we get too far into it. Design guidelines are a set of discretionary statements, where, where development standards are a set of thresholds. So think of it as numbers and not numbers. So design guidelines are concepts that should be followed, ideas that should be reinforced through the, through the actions of development or through the potentials of that development, where the development standards are actual things you have to hit. I took some existing design guidelines from a couple of different codes as good examples. So these are examples of design guidelines. You'll notice the concept is development intensity, and then these are kind of examples of what they're talking about, and you have kind of these looser statements. Locate and orient buildings to respect the need for privacy, light, and air surrounding, of surrounding structures. Auto circulation. So this is something that you could get very specific about, but really what they say is limit, in all of these different sort of statements, they talk about limiting the access to a site for vehicles, trying to limit the, the interaction with pedestrians, et cetera. Now let's look at an example of development standards from this same code. This is Alameda County. I can't remember. It's been a while. These are development standards, tables that tell you exactly how, how much lot square footage you have to have to do certain types of developments, again, with, with respect to accesses. Here you're going to see some thresholds, 20 to 25 feet for an access, as opposed to 35 or 40 feet, because you want to limit that interaction with pedestrians and vehicles. So these are reinforcing those, those statements, those ideas, those broad concepts that are in design guidelines. What we currently have is kind of a mashup of these two types of, of ideas. We want to repeal that and replace it with simple guidelines that are more like these that you're seeing here. So we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go. The reason that we, all the guidelines that we started to put together, that we have crafted as staff, and Zach was instrumental in doing that, he did an enormous amount of work on it, so want to get that out of the way beforehand, so I don't forget to say that. We took a look at the general plan, the concepts, the objectives, the goals, and specifically also at these three, or five key initiatives in the general plan. All of those key initiatives, really, when you look at them, they all kind of have something to do with that downtown zone. One of them, in fact, is the downtown zone itself, City Center District, but even the other remaining four, they have impacts on that downtown, and those same concepts should be part of that. So we, we took a good look at those five key initiatives, and the first thing we wanted to do as an overarching part of those design guidelines that we want to propose is to develop five shared values that would be part of, that they would all support, that the different guidelines that we're going to propose would all support. We feel like the downtown area ought to be authentic, active, inclusive, multimodal, and connected. And in the guidelines that you, that you can review, the actual guidelines themselves, you can read about all those different values and, and make sure we're on the right tack there. But looking at those things, we'll come back to this in a minute, but I did want to say just a couple of things about the guidelines. The current guidelines, as I mentioned, the existing guidelines, they are very complicated. There's a lot of, there's a lot of tables, there's a lot of hard thresholds and things in them that we don't feel like are appropriate for guidelines. That stuff ought to be codified. So there are development standards in the MCCD zone itself. So all those things have been moved to or left in the development standards portions of those codes. And the guidelines, we wanted them to be more like some of these others that we looked at that are simple. Our goal was to make each one of them a simple, one-page, easy to kind of get your head around as you're looking at it, design, and the values that are supported would link back to that general plan, like we just talked about. It would be clear about what issue was being addressed, and that we would recommend different, different actions to support that guideline. So with that in mind, before we get to the, a couple of examples, it's important to remember that the process in this downtown zone stays the same. The design guidelines are still a part of the process, and they have a specific, they occupy a specific role there, and I want to get to that. But in every, in every case, when someone's going to develop something in the downtown zone, in the MCCD, they would have a pre-application conference with Planning Division, they'd have an application for design review approval, and that project, that application would get reviewed and recommended by the MCCD Review Committee, and then that design review approval would have to be looked at by the Planning Commission in a public, in a public meeting. It's a public process for every, every development there. The Planning Commission for those developments has a standard of review that's written into the, into the changes that we made in the MCCD zone. They need to review that project and make sure that these things happen, that the project's in conformance with the current general plan, that it's in conformance with any specific area plans that we might have for that area, that it conforms to the requirements of those sections of land use ordinance, so that, with those development standards of 17.170, that it doesn't jeopardize the public health, safety, or welfare, and finally, that it's in harmony with the purpose of the MCCD zone, and that it adheres to the principles of the design guidelines. So there aren't going to be hard thresholds in those guidelines, but there are going to be concepts and ideas that we need to be able to say, yes, it's, it's doing these kinds of things, or it's at least considered these, these issues. With that said, the guidelines, as we proposed them, are broken up into kind of four big parts. There are some guidelines that are applicable district-wide, all throughout the whole district, some that are, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can you go back to the considered part?
Yes.
When you were just talking about, you said, at least being considered?
Hmm.
How do you, how do you quantify that? How do you know that, you know, it's been considered?
Sure.
Because you have that also in the guidelines, and I wonder, you know, it seems very insipid. I mean, it seems just, you know, considered. Well, maybe you consider this, but, yeah.
Right. No, that's a, that's a great question. So let me...
Something that's very important.
Let me go back, and we can talk about it when we get to slides that have some of our guidelines in them too, but just if I really quickly look at the guidelines here, for example, if we're looking at a project, if we're considering a development proposal, and, and by we, I mean the Planning Division when we first meet with them, the MCCD Review Committee, and then the Planning Commission. If one of our issues is, for example, if one of our guidelines were this access to auto circulation and site access, driveways, and we looked at that guideline and said, well, one of these things says, for example, this first item, minimize the number of entrances and exits to parking areas in order to minimize conflicts with pedestrians, reduce congestions at street intersections, and preserve existing on-street parking. Now, there's no number in there that says you can have two, or you can have five, or you can have six. That would all depend on the size of the project and the necessity of different accesses. We might have situations where fire department and city engineering want another access where we could get away with just one if there weren't public safety considerations. But if we had six different accesses and we really don't need them, we can look at that and say, as a principle, you're supposed to be reducing these, and we don't feel like you're doing that. So we use that design guideline to, to upfront, start to modify plans so that it makes sense when it gets to the Planning Commission. Does that make sense?
That's kind of...
I know. So that kind of thing you'll see throughout design guidelines. There's not a hard number to look at, but you can at least look at it and say, you're clearly missing the mark on this. You don't need four entrances to this project. Just wanting them is not enough. We need to minimize, what are you doing to minimize impacts or collisions between or intersections of pedestrians and vehicles, because that's one of the principles.
So are they suggestions?
I'd say they're more than suggestions. They're, they're guidelines.
I hope so.
They are, they're discretionary statements, but they support those threshold requirements. So where it's really important, for example, okay, so we have a couple of, we have a couple of things like that. We have block length as a development standard that says, block length should be limited in the MCCD zone now, wherever it's possible to 300 feet. And where you can't actually have an intersection of two roads at 300 feet, at least there should be a break in the building or a crosswalk installed, or you should provide for something that lets that block not be more than 300 feet long in effect. That's, that's a development standard. But it's also a principle and guidelines, too, that block length is the best thing to limit, and wherever it's possible, we should be...
So Jared, if, if I can say that it's, we've got policies and then we have guidelines, and this is falling under the guidelines, not a policy, okay?
Sure. So you're going to have to, you're going to have to be able to interpret more broadly with the guidelines, where the standards are going to be pretty clear. The guidelines are going to be a little more interpretable.
So as of right now, the guidelines are a little bit more strict, is, is what you're saying?
Yeah, there's, there are sections of the code that was, that were, there were things that were clearly intended to be code, or they're really written like development standards, and they were put in the guidelines, which are not, and then the language for them is not quite clear in conformance with the provisions set forth in the chapter and with the, and with the MCCD design guidelines. But guidelines are industry-wide, a set of discretionary statements. So how can it be discretionary if it's then a threshold in your, in your design guidelines? They should have been codified if that was the, the case. So that's what we're trying to, we view that as a correction that needed to be made.
Okay.
Let me get to, good questions. Thank you. So here we go. There are some, some of these guidelines are applicable through the whole district. Some of them pertain to the public spaces and streetscapes. There are more that pertain to development sites themselves, and then even more for architectural considerations. So I've got just a couple of examples of each kind of those in the slides here. We're going to start with district-wide, and I believe we're talking about sustainability as the main concept here. So sustainability, and for, as an example, for our, our development standards, for sustainability in Section 1717080, that's in the chapter, so these are now not guidelines, but the actual standards. We don't have third-party requirements, but public buildings are supposed to be designed to comply with high-performance building standards. That's a threshold to meet. We have a section that allows for the city to provide for incentives if people do get third-party certifications. We largely focus on water conservation. There are a lot of things about what kind of fixtures you use, et cetera, and then doing LID, Low-Impact Development Standards. And then this is, sustainable development principles and goals are recommended as standards in design guidelines. So let me move on to Guideline 3, Sustainability, has these kinds of statements and, and suggestions in it, and lots of them mirror some of those things. LID, you're going to see low-impact development in here. We want to make sure that they're doing low-impact development wherever they can. Provide systems that reduce water use, design functional stormwater features as amenities. So there's ways to do all of that, and these are guidelines, where you can do this on your project. We want to see these things happening. Public spaces and streetscapes. We're going to talk about streetscapes a little bit. In our streetscape guidelines, we talk about having street trees on all developments and having those ordered to kind of create a, a visual corridor for people, for pedestrian pathways, broad sidewalks, weather-protected seating. These should all be things that are contained within or considered by the development. Wayfinding signage and lighting. What we don't have are numbers. Now, there are actually some numbers that are in the development standards. They say this many benches, this much street furniture per 100 feet of frontage or 300 feet, I forget what we actually wrote, but this then supports, supports that, says you need to be considering this throughout, and there are a few standards and thresholds you do have to meet, but beyond that, there are these other things to consider. The development site, I think we're talking about open space. So there are others, of course, circulation, and we talked about circulation in somebody else's standards, but we have our own circulation considerations in the guidelines, parking, other things as well, but we just want to talk about, just as an example, open space. So our guideline says you should ensure opportunities for parks and open space opportunities in new developments. There are different development standards that, that could be led to from that, but it needs to be a consideration, of course. We have rules about how many amenities you have to provide, and how many of them have to be outdoors if you're going to do different things. Provide seating throughout sites. Now, that's, that's different. We have rules about benches, but we don't, as a general rule, I'm going to get the inches wrong, but if it's, what is it, Zach? If it's 18 inches, people will sit on it, something like that. So try to design your, your projects that way. If there's landscape planners that can be done with 18 inches, then you're providing seating throughout, and you can point to that as, if you're the developer, you can use that and point to it and say, we're really trying to do this with your open space. Anywhere we have possibilities, we're creating seating, that kind of thing. And then to avoid private open spaces. Now, there's going to be projects, there's always going to be some private open space on projects, but wherever it's possible, we like them to be accessible from the public, especially in a district like the downtown. Parking, so we did two guidelines from this one, the parking guidelines. Designs need to promote sharing larger parking areas among multiple users. So we do the same kind of thing they're talking about in that previous guideline from Santa Barbara or Alameda County, wherever it was that I showed you, where you're trying to minimize the intersection of pedestrian activity and vehicle activity, right? So it's not always going to be possible, but wherever we can, we want to push people in that direction. Bike racks close to building entrances, providing distinctions between the primary parking entrances and service entrances, the back-of-house functions. They ought to be clearly different. Architectural considerations in the design guidelines to think about. Designing for potential. So ground floors, including even parking areas where they're allowed, need to be designed with conversion potential for commons, or for commercial space. So we actually have a, a development standard that says you've got to do a 12-foot ground floor commercial. So this guideline seems maybe a little bit redundant, but it also includes looking at upper floors of parking garages and making those potentially convertible for office or residential uses in the future. If somebody decides going forward that they want to convert that parking garage, have we, have we looked at the heights in those parking garages? Are they too crunched to be used that way? What kind of space could they be converted into? So that we have designs for the future as well. So designing for potential is a guideline. You can't put a whole lot of thresholds on that. You can't put a whole lot of hard numbers on that, but we want people to be thinking about it. So in some cases, it's just a guidepost, like it says in the purpose statement, providing options for people and suggestions for people. Guideline 15, fenestration and porosity. So fenestration is, is an example, is an example of fenestration are these windows. We like clear glass. We have a threshold, a design standard that says clear glass on ground floors. And that's to, that's to provide this kind of fenestration where people walking by feel like they're part of that, part of that development, where they're not cut off from it, they're not separated from it completely, even though they're not, they may not be in there, but you feel like you're part of what's going on. Porosity is the kind of thing we're talking about with breaking up those blocks, allowing for developments not to be a, a solid wall of, of no access, but there should be vehicle access or pedestrian access or some kind of porosity where we can provide that. So that's a concept we want to look for in our designs as well. I did want to talk about historic preservation just really, really quickly. This was something that we presented to the Planning Commission. I should have mentioned that the Planning Commission reviewed this in November of 2020 and recommended approval, but we'll talk about that in a moment as well. Because it was closer to the 2019 changes that were made, we wanted to talk about historic preservation. In our previous MCCD development standards and in the guidelines, there was a lot of language deterring, that was kind of the deterrent approach to historic preservation. The list of significant properties, demolition allowed with only specific approvals, a lot of things down here, the, the development agreement was tough. These are big deterrents for any demolition or modification of historic, of historic buildings. In 2019, that approach was changed, and we, we went to an incentive-based approach for historic preservation. Application and permit fees can get waived for developers who are willing to renovate historically significant buildings, things like that. So there's not a historic preservation guideline. That was a question the Planning Commission asked, and that's why I wanted to make that clear. You won't, you won't see one in the guidelines. There's historic preservation information in the development standards, and it's just this incentive language. The Planning Commission did, after their review in November, recommend... The Planning Commission did, after their review in November, recommend, um, forward recommendation to the council of approval for these guidelines. We did make some findings with the Planning Commission, those are all still relevant, and nothing about that has changed. And we are recommending, that we will be recommending that the city council approve the text amendment to repeal the existing guidelines and replace them with what we have proposed. You should all have access to what we've proposed, and I'd encourage you to, to look them over if you can and call us with any questions. We'd talk about them all day if you want. So, you have any questions for-
Don't encourage me to call you.
No problem.
Can you go to the, to the slide before the findings?
Yes. Oh, sorry. Right here.
The one-
One before that?
One more back, the findings.
Sorry, so on findings?
Sorry, findings.
Got it, no problem. I know that was quick, so if you have questions, please feel free.
Doug?
So this is a question, uh, for Jared, but I think it pertains to the discussion that we just had, and I just think it would be interesting to know what the answer would be. So in light of the previous meeting with, um, uh, GL Sherman from Girding, or from Edelen, saying that they would be willing to make changes to the, uh, design of the project, Block One, which is of course located within the MCCD. And they, they also indicated that if, uh, if the city council was willing to change the ordinance for the MCCD to allow, for example, a shorter building or things like that, that they would be open to all of those kinds of things. So my question, uh, now, Jared, which I hadn't thought of before, was if, if the, if there were to be changes in the MCCD ordinance, um, affecting things like height or, uh, density or massing or whatever the case is, would, would that have a domino effect, uh, and then require changes in the design guidelines? Or are the guideline, uh, the design guidelines, as you've, uh, written tonight or presented tonight, flexible enough that any changes in the MCCD wouldn't make a difference?
That's a great, that's a great question. The kind of, the kinds of changes that you mentioned are all hard thresholds that are just in the code, and that's the reason we wanted to separate those out of the design guidelines to start with. So the short answer is no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect them. They're, they're broadly written enough that there's nothing in them that I'm aware of that would, that would be affected or, or need to be changed as a result of making some changes to massing or height or things like that in the MCCD code itself. No.
My, thank you, Diane. My next question is, what would, I, I've heard you say that the Planning Commission would have then approved these, so would it's, would we remove the MCCD board?
No.
The commission?
Nope. Let me go-
It would still go through that process?
Still go through that process. So the MCCD, uh, Review Committee is, is still in place and would, would remain in place. So they would, any, any application, in spite of changes to the guidelines, would still go through that, that body as well. They'd just be reviewing it by the guidelines here instead of the guidelines that are currently existing.
So as is the MCCD committee, Review Committee could approve a project that was just approved where the old first ward was, was, right? So a seven-story building with a hundred and thirty units. That's something that could, within these changes, could happen in the future?
Yeah, the-
Or something taller, or something shorter, or-
Height's not really treated by this.
Okay.
So-
That's within the code.
Right, that's-
Thank you.
Development-
I'm just making sure we understand.
Yeah. Now, there's, there's really nothing about the height in the, in the design guidelines. That's, that, we view that as a development standard, it is a hard threshold, so it's all, all in the code.
So with the incentives of the historical part, it's just an incentive of, you don't have to pay the application fee?
Right.
And how much would the application fee be?
Well, app, it, we actually could waive building permit fees, development application fees, and those, those can add up. I couldn't tell you how much, it depends on the project.
Could you give me like a, a ballpark?
They can be twenty, thirty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars sometimes.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's good to know, I, I don't know.
It can be greater than that too, we've had some-
Just if they were to restore that? Oh, you mean for the new building? Okay, okay.
So those fees ostensibly, if they were, if they wanted to try to keep a, a historic-
So that could be an incentive for a developer to come in and say, hey, I, is there any other incentives? I mean, the one thing I keep hearing over and over again from citizens is, what are the incentives, incentives for businesses to come to Murray? What type of incentives, incentives do you have? And I never thought about that until we became business owners, and it's true, you know, what are the incentives?
Right.
What would want it, what, as a business owner, why would I want to go to Murray? And it, do we have anything set up like that? Is that something we could put in this?
Not in the zoning code per se, I mean, it's, uh, the incentives for historic preservation make sense, but the other stuff you're talking about is really economic development and stuff, and I would defer to Melinda on that.
Okay, thank you, sorry. I wasn't sure I, how that would play within this.
So the, for this purposes, there's really two incentives that have been set up that pertain to the MCCD. We have a potential incentive for sustainable projects, um, that's in code, and then the second incentive would be if somebody chose to incorporate, keep a historic building, that building permit fee waiver could possibly be an incentive. Anything else above and beyond that, um, is regulated through the state. Uh, most incentives for businesses are provided through the state, not through a local government. And in Murray, traditionally, the only incentives that we have provided for businesses really have been through the development process with the, uh, RDA and project areas and development agreements.
Thank you, Melinda.
I just, um, I wanted to add something too, because I, I did listen to the RDA meeting today, and I, when we were developing these design guidelines, as you go through them and look at some of the photos, I, I would really encourage you to look at some of those. There are a significant amount that were actually taken, because I tried to use local examples when, when appropriate. I didn't want to go use national, um, things for design guidelines, I wanted something local. So I did use items like Holidays Town Center, uh, and, uh, the Ninth and Main type area. Um, I used a lot of those photos in the development of those and to inform those design guidelines. So I wanted you guys to kind of be aware of that too, that we are looking at that and encouraging that kind of stuff in these design guidelines as well.
I think, I think that's, that's great, and as I look at the introduction, I mean, what, this really synthesizes what our citizens want. I mean, you look at that, and that's all the things that they're asking for. And so, you know, I just want to make sure we can actually give them that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, because it's, there are some really good things in this, in this document, so I'm just wondering how we can make that happen.
Well, I, I think it's just, it's the process. It's, it's bringing people in first and, and, and going through the process and being, being supportive but hard-nosed about the kinds of principles that are in there and saying, this is what we expect to kind of see. But there's, there's no other way to do it other than to, to bring them in and, and process the applications. But yeah, we have, we have a good pro, I, I feel like we have a good process set up. We, um, we really, um, put a lot into the design guidelines that are here, hoping to, hoping to make something that would make a lot of sense and still provide that, that guidance and support the, the standards that we have. We feel like it could be a really great, a really great downtown, absolutely. Um, I, I should have mentioned too, that these are, you can, we have these on the website for view, right, Zach? These are on the, they're on the MCCD page on our city website. The, the existing ones are there and the, the proposed ones are there. So Zach's quickly checking the website to make sure I'm not lying. But yeah, they should be, they should be available.
I knew that's exactly what he was doing. I can't even see the computer, but I, there's a mirror, I can see that.
Yep, no problem, but yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, the guy in the chair, so. But yeah, they're, they're available for view, and, and I really hope you have a chance to read through them. There, there's some good stuff in there, and if we need to tweak things, we're happy to, happy to look at that, so let us know.
Do we, this is up for, uh, next council meeting?
I think we have it on regular agenda next, or have we? I don't think we've scheduled it.
When is it? You haven't? That's, okay, that's good, because I'm thinking I need to, this, there's a lot of things to go over, and you keep saying like, I hope you look at it. Yeah, we, we're definitely looking at it. So but-
Take your time and look at it.
Yeah, it, thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure, thanks, Jared.
Look at it, drive around with it, and all that kind of-
That's, send you, send you a hand me to that.
Um, next question, why the change? If you can kind of discuss why we want to change it? I know there are updates, I know, we've kind of talked off-
Um, the, the main reason and the, and the first reason is really just, sorry, I got to zip back to it. The, the real reason and the, the real, not the real reason, but the principle, the impetus behind making the change was that in, in the re, uh, in the amendments that we made in twenty nineteen, uh, one of the things that we, that we corrected was this, this language about developing things in conformance with the MCCD design guidelines. You, you can't, because there's no threshold to meet in a guideline, how do you, how do you not arbitrarily say you've met this or not met it? You, you can't really, it needs to stay a guideline. So we wanted to, we wanted to change that language first off, but we didn't have guidelines written that didn't have thresholds and, and standards written into them either. So we, as a necessity, because of that change of language that we made in twenty nineteen, it was assumed and, and talked about in the meeting that we needed to, as a follow-up to this, adjust the design guidelines and re, revamp them, to remove those standards and thresholds from them and, and make them true guidelines. So that's really the impetus behind it, just to match this language and, and make it work. Yeah, please, Zach, I'd like to speak to that.
Jared, real quick, you, you kid about that, and I'm serious about that. Well, I think, I, I bet we'd all like to do that, where you just said, drive around?
Oh, and I'm not a-
With, yeah, with you, and, sir, I'm very serious about that.
Not a great driver.
Well, I don't know about your driving, but-
My license is current, right? I'm not a-
Melinda gave me a thumbs up. You're no kid. So, two at a time.
To specifically address your, your, your comment, Councilwoman Dominguez, um, so I was looking through some of, some of the old, um, or, or the current, I should say, the current design guidelines, and, for example, there are things in here stating that, that we need to conform with LEED, um, neighborhood development standards, um, that any project that comes forward should be LEED certified, pretty much. And, and that's just not in our code anymore. When we changed the code in two thousand nineteen, we've removed that, um, requiring that we encourage it, but we don't require it. So there's this kind of conflict in, in these current design guidelines. Uh, another example, um, see if I can find it real quick.
Can, will you require it?
In the code, yes. In design guidelines?
We used to.
We used to, back, in the code, we, we-
But then we changed it-
Correct.
-to what we thought would, would make more sense.
Correct.
But also had as high a standard.
Exactly, yeah. And, 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 um, just another example, um, it was actually in the historic preservation section, um, that this, this, I'm going to read this word for word. Two A to, avoid added conjectural historic features. Significant historic resources will remain a physical record of its time, place, and use. Changes that create a false sense of historic development, such as adding conjectural features or architectural elements from other buildings should be avoided. And, and I, I know that those are some things that we're looking at, and so I think there's just, there's a lot of conflict between the current code and the current guidelines, and I think this, these new guidelines help to simplify that a little bit better.
Would you read that again? I'm sorry, I'm trying to process that.
I, I lost the-
Can you show it? Don't you have it up there?
It, it's planery talk.
Show it to us, yeah.
I know, that's why I'm trying to process it.
So yeah, it, it says, significant historic resources will remain a physical record of its time, place, and use. Changes that create a false sense of historic development, such as adding conjectural features or architectural elements from other buildings should be avoided. That's a current guideline.
Interesting. I think you're right, I think we really need to, to process this and, and meet as a council and-
Yeah, I, I-
Anyone else have that need, or you guys?
Yes, definitely. I, I'm concerned that, I don't know why it was delayed from November to now, but to have this initial conversation with the council.
Well, it was initially, I think, um, I don't know why it was initially delayed, but when the moratorium was put in place, um, we decided to push this back another six months too, because there was really, uh, no sense in moving forward with the guidelines if we were changing the code, and potentially, there could have been some changes in the